Okay, let's get started then. Are you ready, Marie? You're good? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Oh, I can't see.
Here.
Thank you. It's really pretty, but I want to be able to see you guys. Welcome to the board meeting tonight. Sorry we're a minute or too late getting started. We had our executive session went over just a little bit, so I apologize for that. But we're happy to have you here tonight. We do have to, we are expecting Ellen Morrison tonight. He was hoping to make it to our regular session, but he'll probably be coming in late. Well, obviously, he's coming in late, not probably. So hopefully, he'll be here soon. And we will excuse Kathy Taylor this evening as well. We'll, as always, get started with a pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, I welcome also members of our union, our district administration. Oh, there's Ellen. And members of the public, thank you for coming tonight. We like to start out each month with recognition of one of our schools. And this month, we are happy to have Copper Canyon Elementary here to be recognized. So we'll turn the time over to Principal Theresa Shannott. And you may have the floor to do your recognitions and presentation.
Awesome, thank you. It's always such a great privilege to come and recognize our school. It's been three years since we've been able to come and do this. So we're excited to be able to be here tonight and share about the great things that are happening and the great people at our school. So first, I'm going to do our student recognition. If I could have Logan Lilly White come up. So this is Logan, and Logan is new to our school this year. And started out, and with starting out anywhere new isn't always easiest, isn't always the easiest or smoothest transition. Logan has overcome a lot in the short time he has been at Copper Canyon and has really thrived in his fifth grade classroom. His fifth grade teacher is Mr. Herbopolis, and I just want to share with what he has, with you, what he has to say about Logan. Over the course of this year, Logan has proven himself to be a highly dedicated student who works hard every day to achieve success and independence in his learning. He is eager to participate in the classroom activities and discussions and does his best to support his peers who may require additional assistance. He always comes to school with an energetic and outgoing personality that helps to create a fun and welcoming learning environment. He has also shown a keen interest in becoming a United States Marine when he gets older, and I am sure whatever career he decides to pursue, he will be highly successful. It has been a great privilege to have the opportunity to teach Logan this year, and I look forward to supporting his continued success at Copper Canyon Elementary. We love having Logan at Copper Canyon and know he is so deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Logan.
Logan, do you want to introduce who you're here with tonight? Did you bring some family with you? Awesome, it's good to have your parents here too, huh? We have a little gift for you, so if you'll come up here, we'll, I don't know, shake elbows or something. Elbow buff. We'll give you an air high five or something as you walk down.
Just wave. There you go, that works.
Thank you, Logan, for being awesome.
Next, we have our volunteer. So Angie Saunders. So Angie has been a part of our PTA at Copper Canyon for the past four years and has volunteered in several capacities. She goes above and beyond to provide additional support to teachers, staff, and students. In the past year, she, in the past year, she has been elected to serve on our community council board as co-chair and was recently voted in as chair. In this crazy pandemic year, Angie still stepped forward to help in creating some normalcy for our students and helped put together a Santa's workshop, COVID-style, for our students. We are so grateful for her time and talents and couldn't do it without the support of great volunteers like Angie.
Yeah.
Oh, I have my husband, Jeff Saunders.
Awesome.
My other half.
Next is our classified employee, and that is Kami McMullin. So Kami was hired as our refocus mentor at the beginning of this year. She comes to Copper Canyon with several years' experience in social work, which has aided in her ability to work with students successfully. As Kami works with students, she helps them understand that they have self-worth and could do anything they set their mind to. She goes above and beyond to follow up with students in the morning, in the classroom, on the playground, and occasionally takes time to sit with them during breakfast or lunch. She does this just to make sure they are physically and emotionally ready to move on with their day and know that she is there to support them in any way possible. Kami has also, has also taken on the job of monitoring our student attendance. She meets with students, calls parents, and works to support them both in increasing attendance rates. She is sensitive to parents' concerns and assures them of the precautions that we are taking to provide a safe, healthy learning environment. She recognizes students for their drive and continued diligence as they, as their attendance rates increase, along with those that make it a habit to arrive each day on time to further their educational understanding. Kami is adored and respected by all staff and student body because of her fun-loving personality and her dedication to her job. We are grateful to have her as part of our coyote family, and I couldn't do my job without her. Thank you.
Yeah, first high five. That's awesome.
She's the best.
Who do you have with you?
Oh, my husband, Ross, is here with me.
Awesome.
Okay, next is our certified, which is Shaylee Fives. Miss Fives. Shaylee has been employed with Tooele County School District for 12 years and has spent all of those years as a kindergarten teacher at Copper Canyon Elementary. She is a master in her field and has proven this with the years of hard work and implementation of strategies that work. Since I have been at Copper Canyon, Shaylee has taught our full-day kindergarten. Her students come to her from all backgrounds and with little to no understanding of letters, sounds, numbers, et cetera. She works tirelessly to do what is needed to help them obtain mastery in all content areas. Just to give you an idea of the work she does, 17% of her students were on benchmark at the beginning of 2019. By mid-year, 79% were on benchmark. The previous year, when she actually had a full year to teach, students went from 20% on benchmark at the beginning of year to 90% by the end of the year. Parents and staff adore and respect the work she does for all students. Mentors recognize the progress students are making in her classroom and bring others to observe and learn from her strategies that produce successful outcomes. Shaylee is an active participant in several areas of our school. She serves as a team leader, has been part of our PBIS team, volunteers to provide opportunities for students to participate in choir and in our school talent show. She heads up our fun committee that aids in bringing fun and excitement to our school and staff. She is an integral part of the success at Copper Canyon Elementary. I just have to share with you what her teammate, Kayla Valdez, in the back, her other half has to say about her. Shaylee Fives is without, without a doubt, one of the most incredible humans on this planet. She is always looking for ways to help others. She never thinks twice about jumping in and filling in gaps anywhere in our school. She is truly an educator rock star. She works beyond hard to help her kiddos get to grade level and even further. Her students know they are loved, and she goes out of her way to make them feel special and fed. Many, many times, she provides daily snacks to her kiddos out of her own pocket. She is the ultimate all-star teammate, and she truly is the backbone of Copper Canyon Elementary. Everybody needs a Shaylee Fives.
Tell us who's here with you.
I have my mom and my dad and my kids, Camper, Kayla, and Mac, and my husband's driving UPS.
He's probably busy this time of year. I like the gnome shirt, too. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Shannott. It takes a great leader to make a great school, so thank you for your leadership at Copper Canyon and to the Copper Canyon team. We're happy to have you here. All right. I'm moving to the public comment. Yeah, I'm giving you the nod.
It's my pleasure to recognize two of our outgoing board members. Kathy Taylor, she's, she's not here, but we'll make sure that she, for the record, knows how much we appreciate all of her efforts. Mrs. Taylor is that person on the board that, when I first got here, would tell me stories about, that she taught one generation and then a next generation. There were several of our teachers that had Mrs. Taylor as a, as a PE health teacher or coach. She's been in the district, involved in TEA, and longtime educator, retired. And then she's also been on the board for many years. And so we just wanted to recognize her. We do have some flowers for her and a gift. And a card. And so I'll put them over here and we'll make sure they get that. Please wish, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for joining with us. And just a round of applause and appreciation for Kathy Taylor. It is not easy. Board members put in a lot of hours that, and a lot of time that's unseen, and we appreciate her leadership and, and we wish her well. Our next outgoing board member is Marisa Manzio, our board president. And I remember the first day I met Marisa. It was the day that I interviewed for this superintendent position some eight years ago, eight and a half. And she has served since 2011. She was appointed, and she's been our board chairman since 2013. And I can tell you that she's on my speed dial, and I consider her a friend and a trusted colleague and have learned a lot from her leadership. She is an anchor. She has always been professional, and she's always reminded me and our leadership team about the, why we're here, and that's about kids. And so we have the same, a card for her and a gift and some flowers. And we'd like to have her come down here and receive those and take a picture.
Because you know I hate stuff like that.
Mrs. Chairman Manzio, President Manzio is smiling because she has a lot more time that's coming her way in January. So I, I do know, and I want you to know that, that as a board chairman, as a board president, you spend three to four days on school business a week, if not more. So thank you, Marisa.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm not really a sappy, into the sappy stuff. He always, the superintendent always teases me about the sappy stuff, so I appreciate it. Thank you. I would love to serve you on the school board. Okay, yeah, if you're here from Copper Canyon, we'd love to have you stay, but goodbye. It was happy, we were happy to have you here. All right, moving on, we have next item on the agenda, our patron comments, and we have four people signed up to speak. So just a reminder, when you come up to the podium, if you will state your name in the microphone so that it's on the records for the minutes. We'll start with Ashlyn Drew and then Rick Harrison.
Hey, I am Ashlyn Drew, and I am actually here to share some words from our fearless vice president of Tooele Education Association, Becca Hall, who is hopefully having her baby tonight, so she can't be with us tonight. So the words that I'm about to share are her words and just from her perspective of talking to members and our teachers. So this is Becca Hall. So there is a huge disconnect between particip, between, oh, if I can read, sorry, there's a huge disconnect between perception and reality on what is truly like in the classroom. I've been off of work the past week quarantining before this baby, and yet the emails, calls, and frustration that we deal with on a daily basis from our teachers, teachers and members only have increased. It doesn't matter that I am taking sick days right now, because these teachers are not, and someone has to care about them, someone has to listen and keep them from breaking or going over the edge. Because if you ask a teacher how they are doing, they are going to say, I'm fine. It's fine, everything's fine. Because that is part of our job to hold it together for our students, our parents, and our families. But it's not fine. The kids are not fine, trust us. It's coming out in behaviors and in the classroom and online. We are not fine. The more we push our teachers, the more they break, and who will hold us together? So that is Becca Hall's words, which she wrote just a couple days ago while quarantining for the baby. And we also just would like to recognize the two board members going out. So TEA has some flowers for you guys as well. So thank you for your support and services on our Board of Education.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. I'm going to put them down. They're very pretty, but I'm going to put them down so I can see your cute faces still.
You can see his face.
Yeah, I could see yours.
Rick Harrison, TEA president, President Manzio and board members. I'd like to just take a few minutes and share a few thoughts with you. Before I start, President Manzio, thank you for your service over the years and thank you for the opportunity to work with you and the things that we've been able to do to help our district move forward. So as TA president, I very much appreciate that. And Kathy, same for you. If you are listening on Facebook, hopefully. I didn't have the opportunity to be a student for you, but I knew of many of the stories and taught with you for a while, and you were the TA president when I first started teaching a long time ago. So thank you, Kathy. Members of the board, you just heard Becca's thoughts on where we're at right now in this situation. I know you received a letter today, today from one of our teachers expressing some very similar sentiments. This is a unique time in the entire world. This is a unique time in education. We've never had a year like this. So our solutions have to also match the unique time that we're in. They can't be just the regular solution to solve regular problems during regular years because these aren't regular years. As I mentioned before in the work meeting, I think it's important that we focus first on the great things that we've been able to do so far this school year. With a few exceptions, we've had our students in class. We have had learning progress. Now, I'll be honest, has the learning progressed at the rate that we as teachers want it to progress, that you as board members want it to progress? No, it hasn't. But you know what? We're in a pandemic. It's not going to progress at that rate. Here's what we are concerned about right now. Our teachers are struggling. They are tired. They are exhausted. This has been a very, very difficult first semester. They are working hard. But it's not just our teachers. It's our support personnel. They are exhausted as well. Our administrators, they are exhausted as well, and our students are exhausted. They are mentally, physically, and emotionally exhausted. If you haven't been in a classroom for an extended period of time, I don't think anybody understands what it's like to teach during this time, what it's like to be a student during this time. It's not like any other time we've ever had. And I said to our, right after we had our last meeting, I said to our TA executive board, you know, the kids in my class today, they were like zombies. That very night, I talked to a teacher at Tooele High School. He said, you know, the kids at Tooele High School today, they were like zombies. I talked to a teacher about a week and a half later, the kids were like zombies. Okay? We are struggling. We are tired, we are exhausted. It's easy to make a decision today and think what looks good today. But I hope that you will, as you make decisions about where we go going forward, you will look down the road. You will look to March, you will look to May, you will look at what we're going to be like, what our students are going to be like, what our teachers are going to be like. I am concerned about our teachers and their ability to maintain their passion to teach through the difficult and challenging times. Because if they lose that passion to teach, then the education of our students will suffer and will suffer dramatically. If they lose that passion to teach, that passion may not be restored during June and July. It may take longer than that. I look at our students, especially those students that are at-risk students. They don't have the support system at home that many of our students do. We have students at home that they're going to get through this. They're going to be inconvenienced and frustrated and challenged and angered, but they have great support systems that will help them get through this. But we have a lot of students that don't have that support system. Learning doesn't come as something easy to them or natural. It maybe isn't an emphasis in the home like we'd like it to be. And if we push them past what they can do and what they're capable of handling and managing, we may lose them. Not as learners this year, but as learners now and in the future. And as teachers, we're very concerned about that. I want you to know, I hear from teachers, Becca, before she went into the hospital to have this baby, heard from teachers, our executive board members here, hear from teachers daily. They are your first-line workers. They are with your students every single day. They know what's happening in the classroom. They know the struggles that they're having, they know the struggles their students are having. They understand the challenges that we're facing today. They want what's best for the students. And I would suggest maybe that we think that, yeah, we may not end up this year quite as far along as we want academically, but we need our kids and our teachers to come out of this school year ready to go next year. It's a dark time right now. It's a challenging time, but the sun's going to come out again. And we need everybody ready, when that sun comes out, to move forward and to be able to reach the heights they can reach. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And thanks for the flowers, too. Next, we have Bob Gownes and then Shelley Snow. Bob Gownes, future board member next month.
And I've really been enjoying the back row.
Well, you'll be on the front row now.
First of all, I want to thank the Board of Education, I want to thank the district and all the staff and teachers and everyone involved. I think, you know, as I've been doing a lot of reading lately, I think the district's doing a good job trying to manage the COVID situation. But I do have a couple, you know, I guess, I guess my question, and first of all, I better go back just a second. I did have Kathy as a student, and I taught for 37 years, you know.
As a teacher.
As a teacher, yes. And most of those stories you hear about her are true. So, but the one, the one thing that I do is I, I have some questions, and I don't need an answer, but just a question to think about. You know, as I've been doing a lot of reading, what is the acceptable rate of burnout for this year? I mean, I've read, you know, since the first of November, I've been doing a lot of reading, but what is the acceptable rate? What, what, what's our students' grades like now? What are we doing to survey it? You know, I, just in the last week, I've heard of probably three or four different possible changes of how to manage COVID and everything else. But how do we make those determinations? You know, in 37 years of teaching, the one thing that I found valuable was data. Where are we getting the data from? I have, you know, I did, you know, I've even become a little bit of a Facebook person, just a little bit. Don't know how to post particularly, but I can read them, okay? And it's like the surveys. Have we changed surveys to our stakeholders to reflect COVID? Or is it still the same survey? Those are just some questions I have. The one thing that I do know is even being a teacher for 37 years, being a TEA president, I'm not, I wouldn't be tough enough to do this. I mean, I have all the admiration for the teachers in the classroom. Those are the people that are the frontline workers. When I listen about COVID, I listen about a mask, I listen about different things, I listen to the frontline workers. The governor can tell me to wear a mask. It means a lot more if a doctor, a nurse, someone like that says it. I think that's where we have to be in our district as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Shelley.
Shelley Snow is president of Spot SD Support Professionals of Tooele County School District. We just want to stand tonight and give thanks again for the wonderful bonus that you passed. Superintendent, thank you. Lark, thank you very much. Mr. Reynolds and the board, thank you so much. That was so timely. We talked about a very tiring school year so far at our work meeting and, but we felt like we needed to publicly thank you again for that bonus. It was very timely. People have been working very hard, as you know. I know you have been working very hard. Teachers have been working very hard. Support professionals have been working very hard. Everyone has. So thank you, thank you very much for that bonus. It, it meant a lot to our professionals, our support professionals. And then again, along with TEA Support Professionals, I'd like to thank President Marissa and Kathy Taylor for your years of service here in the Tooele County School District. As I've gotten to know you personally a little better, I really appreciate what you've done. So thank you and good luck to you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. We appreciate them. Okay, we will move on to our consent items, which are the minutes, expenditure, revenue disbursement reports, personnel decisions, 150-mile contest, amended trust line plans, surplus, and the school resource officer contracts. Is there anything that needs to be polled? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I motion to approve the consent items.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Melissa, seconded by Julia to approve the consent items. Any discussion to that motion? Saying none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to section six of our agenda, we'll start out with some really awesome news. Fiscal year 2020 audit report. We'll turn the time to Mr. Reynolds. We also have representatives from our auditing firm, Squire &amp; Company. Dave and Thomas are here to help report.
Yeah, and I appreciate them being here. I think you would rather hear from them than me. But I do have some copies here, just so you know, we did meet in, had our audit committee meeting earlier today. And so where we went into a little more detail on this, but I have here copies, I like the professional ones. If you want a paper copy, please let me know. I'll make sure we get, we get you one here. You obviously have the one in the board packet if you prefer the digital, but I have some paper copies here for you. But while Dave or Thomas, whoever's going to come to the mic, I'll, unless you have any questions for me, I just thought we'd turn the time over to them to walk through this year's audit.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be in here tonight. As Lark mentioned, we did previously meet with the audit committee, so this will be a little more, less detailed tonight, just more high-level overall. But just wanted to spend a few minutes. But, uh, just wanted to, uh, spend a few minutes uh, and talk a little bit about the services that we provide the district throughout the year and the results of, uh, the tests and the various things that we've done. First and foremost, we wanna talk about the audit of the financial statements. We come in each year, uh, once we receive a a trial balance, uh, which is the summary of all the records and balances and activity for the year. That's our starting point for doing an audit. As we do that, then our job becomes to audit the financial records of the district. More specifically, the financial statements themselves and tuition opinion on those financial statements. So, tonight, we're happy to report that, uh, we're issuing an unmodified opinion or sometimes some, what's referred to as a clean opinion, um, on those financial statements. What that means is that in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, I always say that's the best grade we can give as auditors, so. A positive outcome with regard to that. In addition to the financial statement audit, we do two other audits, I wanna briefly talk about those as well. One is a federal programs audit and the other is audit in accordance with the state compliance audit guide. As it relates to the federal audit, um, the process we go through there is to look at specific federal programs and test those in accordance with, um, federal guidelines and tuition opinion as well on those. The program that we selected this year, uh, was the testing of your, uh, child nutrition program. We did the testing that is necessary there, pulled lots of samples and looked at a lot of different compliance things and all of those things and that nature. But, uh, happy there also to report that we're issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance in accordance with, um, the, the federal program guidelines that exist out there. In addition, as part of that, uh, federal programs audit, we also evaluate internal controls, um, over compliance and look at those and evaluate whether they're working and functioning properly. As it relates to that, we're happy to report that there's no findings or question costs that were required to report to you in accordance with government auditing standards. Finally, the state compliance audit. This too is, uh, a process that we go through where we're asked to test specific things and see that the district is complying with those, those specific items. This, uh, guide is published by the Utah State Auditor's Office and gives us specific, um, procedures that we perform, things that we look at program-wise and otherwise. Here again, our responsibility is to issue an opinion. And we're happy to report that as it relates to, um, state compliance, that the district complied. And we're issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance as well. Another A-grade positive outcome there.
That's what we like to hear.
There you go. There you go. Um, I believe everybody had a chance and has seen probably the financial statements in their board packet, maybe had an opportunity to read through those. If you hadn't had an opportunity, I would recommend at least taking the time to read the management's discussion and analysis, which is about a five or six-page summary or highlight in the first part of the report. It just gives the activities for the year and the highlights for the year for the district overall. With that, I won't spend any specific time on the financial statements unless there are specific questions.
Anyone have any questions? It's pretty straightforward audit. Always two thumbs up when we get one like this.
Great. With that, I just say appreciation to, uh, to Lark and his, all of his helpers, Superintendent and everybody that helps us to, to do our jobs. When we come, they're always well-prepared and really willing to set aside all the other day-to-day stuff they have to take care of us and make sure they give us the information we need so that we can do our jobs. So, we appreciate that and appreciate the good job that they do.
Thank you for coming out, sharing that great news with us, and thank you, Lark, for all your work and your team's work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, six point two, Mr. Jackson, uh, COVID nineteen response update.
Seems like I was just here.
Seems like you were. Cause you were.
I don't, I'm becoming way too comfortable here, just to be honest with you, I need a few months off. Lots happened since we talked a couple of weeks ago. Just to start with, I wanna update you, we have, Twill High School and Grantsville High School have their three contact tracers hired. And they've started, Stansberry High School's finishing up, I, they have one or two already hired and they're finishing up with, uh, the, the last of it, but they should have them going. Testing is underway. And going well. We have had a few, you know, as we've gone along, had a few positives. Test results, that is, as, as, as we've stepped into it, but not a big influx from our testing. We have recently had a, a, a larger increase that kind of matches with what the county has. Our, our two largest high schools, Twill High School and Stansberry, that we just brought off of online, we had them, when we came back to brick and mortar, we had them in the single digits as far as active cases go. They have now bumped back up and they're pushing that one percent again. We do have some changes that I wanna talk about tonight for you. The first one is with, um, with quarantining and how we go about quarantining. The state has worked with the local health departments and given some new guidelines. And with that, when, uh, we have, when we do our contact tracing, those that are within that close contact, if they have worn masks, if all parties involved have worn masks during that close contact, we're not requiring that they quarantine. We're allowing them to stay at work or school and, uh, and symptom check during that time period. That's a change as the state, uh, looked at some of the school districts, um, and some of their positivity rates, what they got out of their quarantining and different things. They found that there was maybe a one to one and a half percent of the people who were quarantined were, actually ended up testing positive during that two week of, two weeks of quarantining. So, they've allowed, uh, the local health departments to, uh, to, um, move forward with, with some changes and our health department has talked with me and so we've moved forward with that. Now, that only pertains to contact at school. If you've come in contact at home or work or, you know, other places outside of the school setting, then it's still, you're still required to quarantine. It also, uh, if we're having to, you know, make some adjustments, there, we had, um, one school that, uh, one of our, one of our high schools ended up having to quarantine a P E class because masks, they were in close contact and did not have masks on, so that required a quarantine. We've had some situations where, um, we have students that are participating, for example, in speech language services. And because a mask isn't worn so that they can see the, the mouth movements and different things, then that, in those situations, a quarantine has to take place. So, we're adjusting, we're trying, you know, that makes us go back and reevaluate the six feet. Uh, we, you know, there's, we have readdressed the issue with, with those who have mask exemptions in our district right now. And regards, with regards to whether a face shield works, you know, where does that stand? And the rule from the state right now and our local health department is that if it's not a mask, then we have to go to the, the quarantine. So, but our, you know, our numbers because of that, our quarantine numbers have, have dropped. They can still test at seven days and with a negative test, return to school or work. There is one change as well that we'll be moving forward to. I, I got off my, our weekly, uh, meeting with the health department. We met again today at four o'clock and they, uh, reemphasized to us that, uh, there are some changes from the CDC with quarantining. We will move from a fourteen-day quarantine to a ten-day quarantine. And that, that was effective as of four o'clock this afternoon, when I got that information from, from the, the health department. We, uh, with, with the testing, one of the things, going back to testing now, moving a little way from contact tracing for a minute, P P E is becoming an issue, you know, it's short sup- we're in short supply statewide. We're very grateful to our county's emergency management program. They, uh, came through with some gloves. Gloves are the things that we're going through the, the fast, fastest with. So, they, they gave us over a thousand gloves to help us get through until we can get some shipments in and, and get some supplies, not only from our vendors, but also from the state. So, hopefully that'll, that'll keep us caught up there. But there are some things, you know, that way that are, it's just kind of a, that slow process of getting things taken care of. We have been working with the state and, and will work, continue to work with the three, with our high schools as we move forward. One of our next steps with, with testing is to allow teachers to come in and receive those rapid tests as well, as well. And that's, you know, it's not just high school, you know, secondary, that secondary setting, it's all of our teachers to be able to come, to be able to test and, and move forward. So, that's, that's the next project that we've gotta work on and make sure that we have the amount of tests we need for that and to be able to cover that as we move forward.
A timeline for that, or?
Hopefully within a week or so, we'll have that up and running.
We, we were briefed in superintendent meeting yesterday by Sarah Young and by Sid Dixon and also Karen Peterson, who's the, one of the governor's education, or the governor, current governor's education advisor, and she'll be on Spencer Cox's team. And they assured us, th- they, they talked about two terms, uh, test, test to play, which we're doing, and that many districts are moving into what they call test to stay, which would move that to employees. Many of our employees are waiting three to four days to get the test and then another three to four days to see the results. And if they're negative, then they can return. Well, if we can do that twenty-minute rapid test and they're negative, they can return a lot quicker. And then it avoids that long wait. And that's referred to as test to stay. And so, we've been, uh, assured that they have purchased and/or are purchasing and going to deliver, uh, another, um, supply of tests in December and then again in January. So, we've been assured that, um, what they're not sure of is just the percentage of how many teachers will, that will be voluntary, whereas with U H S A, it's not voluntary. If you wanna play, U H S A guidelines say that you have to be tested during every two-week window. So, we test half of our students one week and then the other half. Dolene and Matt are experts on that, as well as Jeff Wyatt. But as we venture into this, we're hopeful that, uh, in, in the next week or so, that we can figure out, it's got, it has to be different. We can't really ask A Ds at those high schools to test employees, cause they have their hands full with the number of tests we have with athletes. So, we're gonna have to have another mechanism, and I know that Dolene and Matt have been working on that. So, hopefully, we'll be able to, within the week, roll out additional information. It's really only the very large districts that have started that, uh, test to stay. But we, we expressed interest in that and, uh, Sarah Young did tell me that they have shipments that are, as a matter of fact, I think Ian is planning on, or Steve, uh, this week, on Thursday or Friday, going and picking up additional supplies from U S B E. So, we'll keep you updated.
And that, that's a big piece of it, when we have those supplies in hand, then we feel a little more comfortable in rolling out that. With the test to return, I can tell you, you know, you may have seen some, uh, news pieces on, on the test to return. You know, a couple of the Salt Lake schools, I, I believe it's either Salt Lake or Davis County, a couple of their schools have been to the point where they needed to switch to online and they offered test to return and they didn't have enough participants.
Syracuse.
For them, yeah, Syracuse was one of them that, uh, and so, you know, they didn't have enough participants and they ended up having to stay online for the two weeks. So, those, you know, those are the things that you, you just, you know, you try, you, we don't know what kind of a response. I can also tell you just, you know, a couple of other updates. If you go to the hospital, you'll see a testing center closed. They are out of test supplies. So, we don't know how long. That'll, when we met with them today, they, they didn't have a timeline for us to have that. In the meantime, the, uh, the mobile test place down in Grantsville has a booming business right now. There's always a full li- a line of cars to get in there to, to be tested. And my understanding is that some of the places in town that charge, uh, they're very busy as well. My, to my knowledge, you know, the, the instant care is still four to five days out on scheduling you to get in and get tested. So, um, one of the updates that the school, that the county did give us today is that they expect that, our state expects that the five major hospitals will have the vaccines within the week. We still have to have that emergency authorization to move forward, but once that comes, our teachers have been upgraded to the first responder level. So, those vaccines, my understanding of that is that they will roll out to hospital, those essential hospital workers first. They'll try to get them into our extended care facilities to the, to those persons that, that are wanting that in those extended care facilities and then our, uh, then our, our first responder level vac- you know, personnel. And so, that will include, uh, our teachers in that now. So, that's, that's a big change for us with, with that and, and those. That, that's good news, I think, for us as we move forward. So, um, with that information, I'll, I'll stand for questions, if there's anything I can answer.
Melissa has her hand up first.
Okay, so with the quarantine guidelines, and maybe this is, this is a question probably you can't answer, but maybe you could give some.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Please do. So, with, like, I remember back when the high schools had, you know, s- s- fourteen cases. And so, they had, I remember last time we were looking at shutting down one of the schools, you're like, but Melissa, there's like four hundred kids absent. This is not sustainable for teachers, they're basically doing the hybrid, they've got half the kids out, half the kids in, not half, but a large portion of the school. So, now that they have looked at data and kids are not getting COVID because they're wearing a mask in school, they get to stay in school, so that should ease. And I, I say this, cause I know I am not in a classroom and I respect and I'm so grateful for Rick and Becca's comments and I, and, but I do have kids in the classroom and I am so grateful for all they are doing. But my hope is that this can relieve that they're not doing online, I'm getting some nods. That won't give any relief to teachers that they're not having so many absences?
It will, it will, Monday through Thursday, I mean, on Friday, all of our district is in remote learning. But it should lower the number of quarantine.
Should lower the number of, I mean, I'm just.
Cases that are quarantined.
So, I can, I can give you some, I have data from Twill High School on that.
Okay.
So, Twill High School's at fifteen quarantined at this point in time.
Okay.
When we were at fifteen before, we were looking at twenty-five to thirty percent of their student body that was quarantined, that we had quarantined, that didn't count. You know, mom and dad have COVID or somebody else in the household has COVID and I gotta stay home now and those kinds of things. There it's, so we had a, you know, they were, when we moved them to online last time, they were pushing like a, a forty to fifty percent absentee rate. A forty to fifty percent absentee rate per day.
Right.
Uh right now with fifteen with cha- the changes in the quarantine, we're looking at a seventeen percent. Today's was a seventeen percent rate of absence, that's a little bit more into our average range for this time of year, so.
So that's about average for what?
So that, yeah, so that, I mean, that does make a difference, but uh you know, I I wanna point out too.
Take away all the stress, I'm just trying to understand as we make decisions moving forward. With things that go on and if, you know, kids are saying, they're saying, well, kids are in, kids are out, well. Maybe kids won't be out then, it's just kids are in except for the few that their families, eh, right? Okay, okay.
Yeah, so um I know last time that we talked as well and this, you know, this kind of plays into because I think that there's. We we can't deny the that mental stress that goes on for for teachers and and for the students as well, you know, we. We know that we have a lot of parents that get on and check our tracker, we try to keep that updated, that is. If I had a PIA right now, that would be the COVID tracker. Because of how the information comes to me, it's hard, that's a hard piece to keep. Accu- uh uh up to date and we do, we're doing the best that we can to keep it up to date, but there are times that it does lapse behind. So we know that they're they're stressed with that, I can tell you from the from from uh health, our health department standpoint. When they get tests in and right now we're averaging our seven day average on on positive tests are sixty cases a day. For our county, okay, we're at a twenty-three percent positivity rate. Which is slightly lower than the state's twenty-seven percent positivity rate. But we're averaging sixty cases, that's a lot for our small health department and their staff to be able to trace. The thing that they're finding now is that one in seven are responding. When they call, okay, so if they have seven people that they've got to contact to try and do those investigations. Only one is responding to them. So I think that part of the fear comes at this point in time, part of this, part of the stress, I'm not gonna call it fear, I'm gonna call it stress. Is that we don't know. On a, you know, on a daily basis, who's coming into our building that should be quarantined, there there's no way to get an accurate answer to that. We don't, you know, we have families that because they don't wanna be quarantined, because they don't want the health department telling them things. They don't want the school district telling them things, they're not going to get tested.
But that's why we have masks and they've said that masks work and it's been proven that masks work, right? I mean, by, they're not spreading in schools, right? A- am I making a false statement?
You're not making a false statement, but I think that there's probably a little bit that goes into that too. Because up to this point, I think that we have had a pretty good, a very good percentage of our our patrons.
In our schools.
That have been honest with us.
Right.
As time drags on, I, you know, how many of us made exceptions for Thanksgiving? You know, I, we all make decisions on whether to wear face masks or not every single day. You know, there's there's things that we do on a daily basis.
And they're coming and they have a mask on, it's already like based on the quarantine changes. That the health department that we're talking about listening to doctors that Bob Gallon's talked about. They are saying i- if people are wearing masks, i- I mean, it's an air, it's it's spread by rest.
According to the data that they have collected right now, then yes.
It it reduces exposure, it doesn't eliminate.
Right, but it reduces it so and and we've seen that and with the data that. That's why they've changed it, they feel comfortable with that data saying. That we're not gonna quarantine these six feet or these kids around them because. Everyone has masks on and it's not spreading through the schools, correct?
At a rapid rate.
Right.
Yep.
Well, a- another case in point is, as you know, Salt Lake is online. And their positivity rate is similar to ours and we're on remote only on a Friday, so. The data are definitely pointing to that online.
Doesn't.
Is i- is it doesn't change that posit- that spread. And that face to face doesn't increase that spread significantly. So uh or you'd have a district that's fully online, if that worked, not having any cases. But they, the but Salt Lake's reporting um uh serious issues with that, so.
Do Julia, do you have a comment, a question?
Oh, mine's a little bit different, have we finished this whole discussion?
Is it, it's not ever finished, but go ahead.
Well, so, so, okay, so, so how close are we in to getting Twilla and Stansberry. Online again with the number of. Actual COVID cases they have.
So Twilla High School has fifteen positive cases right now. Their enrollment is, their current enrollment is just over fifteen hundred students, so they have fifteen. So they're at that one percent threshold.
I have a question about that though, Matt, because you mentioned that when they came back off of online. That you had positive cases in the singles, but that shouldn't be because when they come back of two weeks online. That should be reset at zero, even in the guidelines.
No, because we continue to track, because we have students there, we still, there, we're still getting information as we can. Because you have to remember that even when we switch to online, we have students that we're allowing to travel, to go to T Tech. To to the CLC, uh to participate in their activities.
But it doesn't make sense to carry those positive cases over, now new cases.
They're not carried over, they're they're ones that come in as we go, so you, there's a constant flow of people. Like if we move a school to online, we may be at twenty the day that we move them to online. They may grow to thirty and, you know, hold steady there for a while, they may continue to grow at a pace. And then you start to have those, uh their their ten day quarantine is off, so we pull them off. And yeah, we would like to grow that back to zero, but the whole time you're continually adding.
I I understand that, it's just, there's a piece in the guidelines that talks about there being a reset to zero after two weeks.
I think it's the Salt Lake Health Department advised all their schools to start at zero after two weeks, but. So my question is very similar along with what we're talking about, um I just received an email actually today from Stansberry. Saying total active cases attended at SHS is nine, total active cases not attending at a at SHS is nine. So they're counting their active cases as eighteen, but half of those kids aren't at school. So how, I guess that's my question is.
Is a positive case.
But if they're not.
Matter where they get it, it doesn't matter where they get it, it never has mattered where they get it, a positive case, it doesn't, you don't have to get it in our school. In order for us to record it.
But you have to attend.
Case is a positive case.
I guess my my thought process though is that they would have to be attending in order for it to be counted before we went to an online platform.
We don't count their quarantine if they've been exposed outside of the school. But a but a positive case, if they've been in school and they've tested positive, then they're counted, it doesn't matter where they contracted at.
But if they're not at school, then we are not counting that, is that correct? But they are counting.
Not if, yeah, I mean, if they're not in school, then they're not, they've, then they're not attending that school, right?
Well, they are counting. They are counting it though because.
Confusing how we call, so if the student hasn't been in the school building during their during their infectious time period. Then we don't have to contact trace.
I think that's the question.
We do count that as a positive case for the school because they're a student or a faculty or a staff member at that school.
But the risk is lower than if they were attending, right?
Absolutely, cuz we don't have to contact trace, we know they haven't.
I I guess my concern though is, I mean, if half the kids aren't at school and then we put it all to online, it just, it seems. A little, I don't know what I'm trying to say, let's move on. Is your light off or on, it was on?
Well, okay, it, I, but I'm just, so what, I'm just trying to get a a feel for. Do you think that they will be closed before, or go to online before Christmas, do you think there's enough cases or?
This is what I don't know about Twilla High School and Stansberry High School right now, I don't know if we have in-school spread. Every other time that we have moved to online. We've been able to detect. That it has started to spread in the school. These are coming to us so fast right now that I I bel- my personal belief, I don't have, I don't, it's not factual, but my personal belief on it. Is that this is part of the increase from when they were home for Thanksgiving break. That's that's where I, how I feel about it right now, I don't know that for sure, I can't tell you factually that that's the case.
Which is interesting because sending them home. Has resulted in additional cases. You see, the paradox there is, yeah, so we send them home.
And that works both ways too, because we also know when we go online, then those case numbers drop. So to say that, you know, go, there's not a right answer or a wrong answer here, it's what's best, you know, and and I'm not gonna.
Well, in the number.
Tonight saying, hey, I think we need to move a school online, I don't have enough information for you right now to.
Matt, are there other factors besides the number that are triggers, that's just one of the guidelines or one of the factors.
I think, I think for us.
Other one which is school spread and you're 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 doing that in concert with medical providers, I mean, we don't have any medical people on our staff. So you're doing that with the health department.
I think for us, it's always been, is it in the school? That's why I'm not, you know, I haven't asked Scott, I haven't, I haven't gone to the superintendent yet and said, hey. I think we have it in the school, it's spreading in the school, we need to move to online, in the others I have. As we've moved elementary classrooms and as we've moved the two high schools so far to online. Then we we have seen it in the school, I don't, I don't have that right now, so.
Thanks for clarifying that though, because I think that was kind of what these guys, these were asking about the numbers.
You know, the other piece that we looked at, so we looked at the number, the one percent, are we at one percent yet?
Yeah.
We looked at, is it a school spread? And then we have also looked in the past at the number of people quarantined, well, now we get to take that off. That quarantine piece, to a, to an extent, we get to take that off.
I think that's what I was gonna just clarify one last time, we know in that email came through, nine cases. And then nine not at school, so that's an eighteen, when we look at closing at school. I would assume we were really looking at that nine because they showed up to school with symptoms which then could cause a spread. Whereas the other nine, they haven't been at school for the last.
In every case, whether it's been elementary or whether it's been a secondary school or an elementary class, when we have moved to online. We have been able to see the spread in the school.
School, okay.
We've never, we've never closed the school or shifted a school or a classroom based solely on hitting a number mark.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, I think we need to make, I clearly, I I mean. Matt, I told you the other day, you're doing a great job and I think that that's what we need to look at is facts over fear. And and stress those facts, that what we have and some of it, we don't have facts, right? Some of it, we we do have to. Superintendent.
Yeah, it's there's, it's a moving target for sure and I think what we're interested in is, we know that the health department's getting different numbers. What I don't wanna see is that our parents get a letter home from a school saying. We've had a two positive cases and then on our. Uh COVID tracker, we don't even, so I'm just talking about internal consistency, not. The challenge of making sure that that jives with the health department and their information, but just our own and so. My suggestion was that our principals report that daily by four and that. That gives you or someone on your team an hour to update ours so that people can, cuz we've had parents that called and say. I just got a letter from the school, but the COVID tracker says there's zero, so obviously the school knew, they just need to communicate that to you.
Yeah.
Uh the other thing I would say is, gosh, we get criticized for going back and forth, I I just, I wanna be very clear. We're following the guidance of health professionals because uh Angela Dunn is the state epidemiologist and the local health department is responsible. So whether it comes from the governor through an executive order, it's a health department, it's a local decision and we're following that and. We get criticized for this going back and forth, but yet there's no data that says that that's harmful. It may not be pleasant, it may not be enjoyable, it may be stressful, but. We know that when we pivot offline, we automatically lose, we got data from Grantsville area. Sixteen percent of our teachers do Zoom, something on Friday. And at the elementary, about sixty percent kids are covered, but only at the high schools, secondary, about thirty percent. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, so when you look at that, automatically when we pivot to online, we lose fifty percent of our kids. Which is just not acceptable, right? And nobody wants to lose that, so um that's the dilemma that I'm talking about. When we, when we pivot to online, the assumption is that, oh, that's good, let's do it longer, it's gonna lower our cases. But we have no ability to control that spread at home, we can only control what we can, which is in our classrooms, so. Uh when people are critical of that, I mean. At least kids are getting some face-to-face instruction and fifty percent of our kids aren't getting lost.
I would think that one of the things we would wanna look at too, you know, if if we're looking at stuff like that and making that. You know, I'm not, I'm not here to, I'm here to report numbers to you tonight and give you some current information on where we're at. If, you know, if you're looking for a recommendation or in more information, I think maybe one of the things that we need to look at too is. So we know what we lose when we switch to online, but we've also heard from our our teachers association and they've talked about some of the things. What are we losing in class right now, because we do have zombies? What's our, what's our teaching rate going on there, what's our learning rate going on there? We know what it is in one of our areas when we pivot to online, but what is it in in the brick and mortar city?
But if we pivot to online, we're just moving our zombies from the classroom to zombies at home, so that's not the answer to the zombie problem.
Right.
Solely i- in and of itself.
But I can also, no, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I probably shouldn't be thinking about it this way, but just the way that you framed it right there, Matt. Uh kind of brings some of my concerns to mind because to what extent. I I think we've had several weeks already this year where two of our high schools have been remote. They've been home and our teachers, I mean, we know just based on the statistics that. Scott was just mentioning and just common sense, that from a learning perspective, face-to-face is is better than. Than online, but we've had, it just seems like we have a weird setup. Because we have these schools where if your cases are go- going up, you know, we're gonna send you home and let you rest and recuperate. And if you're in a school where your cases are under control, you know, keep getting in that classroom, keep putting on the mask, keep. You know, doing those things that are exhausting you, and so when I hear this discussion about. Well, we might be shutting down Twilla and Stansberry in the lead up to Christmas break, you know, but everyone else, you've just gotta keep. Plugging away, it just seems like it's it's not very consistent and it has distorted incentives. Um because the higher, you know, you get higher cases and then we're just gonna send you home and so I don't know what the answer is. Um but I think we need to, I mean, we've heard for for two months now that our that our teachers are really struggling. And and we just keep going along, but then we're sending, you know, half of those teachers home based on the quarantine requirements. And telling the other half, well, you just keep, you know, you just keep plugging away.
Cover for each other because we don't have enough substitutes.
Yeah, I mean, it just, I I and I don't, like I said, I don't know if there's a perfect solution. Um but it just, it's, it strikes me as a little bit odd.
Camille and then Julia. So I'm not discounting, I know teachers are tired, I've I've talked to quite a few of them, but um I just wanted to share my personal experience, so. My son, of course, was um put on a quarantine list around Halloween, he didn't end up getting sick, but during his quarantine time, Stansberry went to online learning. So he wasn't in school for almost a month, he loves being back, he comes home every day singing and he's like, we're back at school. I mean, you would've thought we went through all of March all over again, so. Um I I get that there's some kids out there, kinda like to Ellen's point, I mean, Grantsville, they haven't gone to online. So they're kind of having a hard time, you know, like you said, like, they're like, wait, when when do we get to go online, right? But at the same time.
When do we get to go?
No, really, like, I I think and a lot of the kids look at it as a vacation, I mean, even when my son was on quarantine or when the school was online. The teachers were trying to do what they want, could do for classes, but the other kids wouldn't show up. So it's, it's not happening, the online learning is not happening the way that it needs to. And so, and like Ellen said, I don't know the answer, I just wanted to share that maybe not all the kids are that sad.
Just anecdotally, from what I've heard, you know, with Twilla High School, because they've been through it twice.
Right.
The second go-around was much better than the first go-around.
Good.
For teachers and students.
Good.
Cause I've heard from both, you know, students that first time thought it was a vacation. And their grades dipped because of it, because they weren't turning in assignments, they weren't logging on, second go-around. They were a lot better at it. And I think that our teachers were a little more prepared that second go-around as well.
Yeah.
Julia?
I mean, I think our teachers are getting a little bit better each time, too. And, and I think, I mean, it, it's a very hard decision, because I think they are tired, they are. But I do think for the majority of the school year, I want kids in classes, I want, I wanna keep that going. But I, I was just thinking, so I'm wondering, if this week before Christmas, if we end up putting two high schools online. What about doing the whole district for that one week, just rests, everybody kinda gets a rest? I know that, I know the online learning is not the same as in-person, and I don't wanna do that all the time. But I do think there's a lot of gaps this year, there's a lot of other things going on, and it is a rest. A little bit for our teachers, and if, if the two major highs, biggest high schools are online anyway. If they end up going there, it looks like they may be headed that direction. Um.
I, I can, I can tell you that, you know, as we've pivoted those two schools to online, what we have found is, is there's a de- a definite effect on their feeder schools. Uh, we saw an increase in families calling into the elementary, saying, hey, my high schooler is quarantined for the next two weeks because they've pivoted online. We're gonna keep our elementary kiddo or our junior high kiddo at home as well during this time period. Um, I can also tell you too, that in Twilla High School's case, two of their feeder schools, two of their elementaries have four elementaries there at fairly high numbers, they're not into double digits yet, but they're in high single digits right now.
We just, um, Melissa's next, but we just had a meeting, this is skipping ahead a little bit, as far as reports, but we just had our student advisory committee meeting, where we meet with representative, student representative from every high school in the valley, and their perception of going online the second time was not the same as yours. Their report was that that wasn't the case. They feel like kids are really missing, were still missing out the second time around, and that they felt like they needed to, even more direction as far as they should have, almost like they should have real class, like for the whole class time, because they felt like they weren't getting the help they needed, that they were having assignments, but not being able to get access to the teacher. So they, a lot of kids were frustrated with, um, with that situation, and then just checked out.
Well, and I, you know, I think that's the, I'm, I'm giving you anecdotal, I've talked to less than ten students. And I can tell you, I talked to them the first time, the second time, they said, oh yeah, I was a much better student the second time.
Yeah.
So.
Melissa?
Um, when Julia gave that suggestion about giving the whole district a rest, I, I saw some teachers nodding like this, and I don't know if they were agreeing or disagreeing. Because some teachers are saying online is so much harder, they would rather be in the classroom. So, I, I, I don't know, I, I, I see that, I agree, and that's where it's hard, it's one of these things that I know even Bob talked about, like there is an opinion and a right, a- a- and I think all of the opinions are right. There's no wrong, or e- everyone, anyways, I don't know, that's where I struggle with that, because I, I initially a- agree kind of, but then the teachers, you know, I, I was saying earlier, I, between my five kids still in the system, I think I have thirty-four teachers that are so, in some kind of contact with me, and I think thirty of them would say absolutely not, do not put me on. Maybe not, I'm speaking for them, I've only talked to a few of them, but some of them are saying, no, I would not rather be online, but for that week, maybe, I don't know, I think it's, I don't know, it's a struggle, I think it's an interesting thing. The thing with this new quarantine. I would like to see it play out, the new quarantine rule is to see how it affects everybody, kids and teachers, will they feel a little bit less without the four hundred kids absent? Would be my thing too.
I will remind us, this is just an update.
Yes.
It is an update.
Come on.
It's not a, we didn't ask for recommendations, or, so I don't know that Matt's prepared to.
Nope, not at this time.
I don't think any of us are prepared to vote probably either, but. It's a, it's not, it's an update, so.
Th- these will be my final words on the subject.
Go for it.
Um. I mean, I, I agree with everything, or a lot of what's been said, I shouldn't say everything, I strongly disagree with a few things. But I won't call those things out right now, but I do think, I mean, we've already had uh, four or five weeks online for the vast majority of our students. And so, I mean, to Julia's point, I would strongly support, um, a week either before break or after break of, of going online. And w- we're expecting the, the increase in cases anyway. And i- it's that time of year when people are getting sick, and it just seems to me that, um, we've got that many missed weeks, we've got a Covid year. And, you know, we're feeling uptight about, about a week, and that just, it, I don't know, it strikes me as kinda strange to think about it that way, but. Anyway, tha- that's all I have to say.
Can I just ask a, maybe a clarifying question? So I'm, I know the, um, state school board waived how many day, no, hours. We can be in school, right, but not days. So they waived hours, not days, right? Do I have that right?
I'm gonna turn to Doleen.
They waived. They didn't, they waived days, not hours.
So they waived days, not hours, okay. So if we did online for that week before Christmas break, are you thinking just online, or no online, and just extend Christmas break for an extra week?
Online.
Online, so we wouldn't have to make it up at the end of the year, right?
That, and that would be my.
Your suggestion.
And in, in fact, I mean, Marissa, you're the Roberts Rules expert. Um, this is currently a discussion item, I'd like to make a motion to move it to a, an action item, so that we could, uh, potentially.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, clarify the nine ninety.
Lark and I are talking back and forth, what they waived, we think we will go back and, and make sure that we're right, but what they waived is what we can count in that nine ninety. So if you recall before, we couldn't count recess, we couldn't count before and after school, passing times in the hu- in the high schools, now that can be counted as your nine ninety. Which it couldn't before, so they didn't waive the nine ninety or the days. They waived what you could count, or they included other things into what you can count for the nine ninety, right, Lark?
My recollection, and I'm gonna look it up, is that the nine ninety was waived. I hesitate to say this, because I brought this up with, I was pointing over at Mark, uh, so that, I, my understanding is they still have to have a hundred and eighty days, so if in theory, if you take a week off, that is not a school day, you have to make that up.
Right.
So, and that's why we were able to do half-days at the beginning of the year, and not have to make him up at the end of the year.
Counted as a day.
Right, right.
If you go half, they count as a full.
But if we did online learning, we're not gonna have to make that up at the end of the year, but if we did a complete break, then yes, we would have to make that up at the end of the year. Does that sound correct?
Now, I hesitate on the nine ninety, because the four-day school weeks, they did not waive the nine ninety.
Because that fifth day is an online learning day.
They have to have nine hundred and ninety hours, because they already don't have one hundred and eighty days.
Right, that's right. So we'll, we'll clarify and make sure what we're telling you.
I just, I really don't wanna go to school until July.
I'm gonna, I, I, I'm actually moving that we that we move this item to an action item, and in the course of talking about a Covid nineteen update. Uh, move to, to, uh, go on le- on, online for the week before.
First, first just move it to an action item.
Okay, I'll move it, we'll see if that passes, thanks.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, it's been moved by Alan, and seconded by Julia, to move this discussion item to an action item.
I.
Discussion.
I haven't, sitting, I've been trying to really listen, and, you know, kinda take this in. I guess, Alan, my, I mean, we can surely have the vote, but my, my thought on this is, you know, th- in fairness, you know, nobody came with data. We, we didn't, th- this is, it feels a little bit emotionally based, not data-based, or, you know, we, we didn't have any recommendations that, you know, there wasn't any kind of thought to that. Um, and understanding that, you know, I guess, kinda like to do things with a goal or an outcome in mind, I mean. Taking a week off to, to get that rest, kind of implies that the two weeks off, we're not gonna have that already.
We're just discussing whether to move it to the action item or not.
Right, but, but I guess, just, but just even moving that, seems like we came to this meeting today with a discussion, kind of an update, and not with that information, and not prepared to really act on that, it feels a little bit kind of a knee-jerk reaction to something that we haven't really or, in, in fairness, the administration hasn't, you know, that we haven't come back and looked at the data, so to, to even make a decision on it feels a little bit out of scope of the conversation, that's just my feeling on.
Yeah, and if I could respond to that, that's okay, um, so, I mean, you know, I can't speak for you, of course. I, I've been thinking about it since our last meeting, and I've raised it with both Marissa and the superintendent, and I didn't push for it to become an agenda item, but, um, I've seen it firsthand within my own home, and I've seen it among my family members, and so it's something that I felt strongly about, in terms of data. You know, I, I don't know if any of this is based on really very much data. Um, I mean, we've had all kinds of cons- if I could just finish.
Yeah.
Uh, all kinds of concerns about Covid and Covid numbers, and what's the tipping point, and like I said, Twilla High School's been home for four weeks, Stansberry High School's been home for three weeks. And, uh, and so from my perspective, going online for a week to try and address some of the concerns that we've heard for two months now. Doesn't strike me as a huge deal, one way or the other.
So, when I just, the data point wasn't necessarily, I mean, data, but also recommendations from, you know, basing it on you know, health experts getting feedback from the, the health department, I mean, you know, w- the goal of that, unless it's not around that, a- and to your point, you know, maybe it's just a feeling of we need a break, but if that's the case, then it's different, but anyway, my point of just the conversation was, it feels a little bit you know, changes the scope of what this conversation was about.
Yeah, well, and that's why I moved, because I knew it was changing the scope.
I appreciate that. Melissa, is it a discussion to the motion?
It's a discussion, so the motion is to move it to
Action item.
An action item. I'm, I, I'm just concerned, because I feel like it's a, I'm not opposed to what you're moving to the action item, but I wanna I would like some recommendations and feedback from people who have been doing the research, and I'm concerned if it's moved to an action item, you're quickly, and maybe I'm not allowed to say this, because it's not in, pertains to the exact action item, but you're saying the week before Christmas break, well, I'm wondering, well, I mean, I'm not opposed to either before or after, but I would like some
Okay, so.
Data, so my, I'm nervous about the, moving it to the action item, because I don't feel I can make a great informed decision tonight, that's my concern.
Hey, any other discussions? Okay, let's vote, and the vote is on moving the Covid response, Covid nineteen response from an information item to an action item. That's all we're, we're voting on. Do I need to do roll call, or do you? Okay, Alan?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Um, Camille?
Aye.
Scott?
Nay.
Melissa?
Nay.
And I vote nay. So the motion fails. I would, I would think though, is it something, do, does the board feel strongly that they, we need to be the ones to make a decision on that, or can we? Do you feel comfortable in leaving some of that up to administration in, in watching the numbers? Cause I, I feel, the reason I voted no is because I feel the same way, I don't think I was prepared to vote on that tonight. Just based on the information we have, it was, it was an update, I don't, I don't feel like we asked you know, the team to bring the information I would've needed to make that decision, but is it something that we feel like if the numbers continue to increase, or something happens that we feel like we can leave that up to the administration, or does the board feel like we would need to have another meeting and, and discuss that in the future? Um, Scott, Melissa?
It, it, it just feels out of the scope of what we've previously empowered them to do. This would be, i- if historically, we've empowered the district to make those decisions on opening and, or closing school, going online or staying at home. Um, based on recommendations of the health department, this isn't a recommendation. This would be, if, if the decision to close a school is based on a recommendation that said numbers are up, we need to close, that makes sense to me, but if it's, uh, we're feeling stressed and we're closing simply because of you know, a, a feeling of stress, that feels like that's outside of, uh, health department recommendation, in which case, that feels like the board ought to be making that decision to me.
Melissa?
I was just gonna say, I'm not opposed to meeting, uh, I trust the district, I've seen Matt do a great job, but I do think it we've ha- already had a lively discussion, and I've, uh, appreciate Alan's points, I think they're awesome, and I would love to discuss again if we need to, but can't we make it a short one? I mean, we've had really short meetings in the past, we could do it, you know, if this, if we
But your, the question was, not the length of a board meeting, but rather, do we trust the administration?
Oh, yeah, um, I'd rather discuss it as a board personally, but I don't know if that's, is that a vote?
No.
It's okay, because I feel a, a week, a snow week coming on. Not, not a snow day, but a snow week, so.
I think we, you'd need some snow.
Yeah, I have no, um, objection to the administration, you know, making a decision, and um, I don't know, I find, I find so much of this discussion, um, I guess ironic. You know, it's like, okay, if you're, if you're worn down, then the best thing you can do in this environment is just be careless. Because if your Covid numbers go up, then you're gonna go home. And otherwise, uh, you know, there's, there's no breaks for you. And, and, you know, I would never suggest it in a year in which we were not having a pandemic, but anyway.
Okay, what, will you keep, um, in touch?
Every day if you want.
I know. I say that kind of facetiously, because you've been keeping in touch, um.
He has been.
You haven't, you haven't heard from me enough?
No. No, I've never heard from you enough, um, let me know if we need to have a meeting.
Okay.
How's that?
That works. All right.
Thank you, Matt, thank you. Mark Ernst. Six point three, Grantsville area director's report.
I had to wait for, uh, Mr. West to disinfect the podium after Matt was up here. We're gonna miss you, Steve. And Marisa, Marisa, you to Marisa, you also, and Kathy, she's not here, but we'll miss her on the board. So thanks, board members, ooh, I'm, I don't know if it's good or bad to go after Covid.
I don't know either, but your area report was awesome.
Yeah, thank you. So thanks for the opportunity that, uh, I have to address you today, uh, to share some highlights of the Grantsville area. I purposely decided not to make this report about test scores, or rely heavily upon data to tell the story of the Grantsville area. But I am willing to provide data for you in the future, if you request, so if there's something, some data point you really just are dying to know about the Grantsville area. Please shoot me an email, I'll be happy to gather that together for you. My written report is part of the board packet, and you have a printed copy there at your desk. Um, the area report covers ways our administrators are making a difference at the schools through small gestures. A teacher profile on Dalton Drake, who's a fourth grade teacher at Willow Elementary. List of fun statistics about the Grantsville area, I actually sent out surveys to, um, classified employees, certified employees. And ask every elementary teacher to give the survey in their class, and every English teacher at the secondary level to give the survey, so that's how I compiled that data. Uh, there's updates from Ibaipan Vernon and highlights about a few of the fantastic things that our educators in the Grantsville area are doing with remote learning. However, the most significant people in the Grantsville area, contrary to what some may think, are not administrators or even teachers or any of our classified employees. The most significant people in the Grantsville area of our, is our, our, our students. And I want to provide a way for a few of our students to speak with you. So if Dustin will make sure the volume's up, and if you will please direct your attention to the monitors behind you so you can hear what some of our students say about the Grantsville area. Going to go on a little road trip out to the Grantsville area, talk to some students and see what's going on. Come with me.
My favorite thing about Grantsville Junior High is everybody is nice and respectful to each other.
My favorite thing about Grantsville High School is how much support everyone has for one another. All the clubs and teams and teachers all support each other.
My favorite thing about Grantsville Elementary is everything because they're just so friendly and it's the best school in the world.
Um, I love how close everyone is because it's so small.
My favorite thing about Willow Elementary School is recess. I like to play outside.
My favorite thing about Vernon Elementary is having fun with my friends at recess.
So my favorite thing about Wendover High School is all the extra privileges they have, like sports and clubs.
The Willow Elementary School, because it's part of a nice community and, uh, and there's always fun things to do. But there's something I wish was here, more after school activities.
My favorite things of Anna Smith Elementary is there's, at recess, there, there's fifteen minutes instead of five. I like that because five minutes is short.
Favorite thing about Grantsville Junior High is the teachers and that they're all so friendly and will help you with anything.
My favorite thing about El- Anna Smith Elementary is learning so I can go to college.
My favorite thing about Grantsville High School is how welcoming everyone is and I feel like we can just be friends with everyone and it's really great.
My favorite teacher at Grantsville High School is Mr. Richardson because his classroom is always super fun and I learn a lot in it.
My, my favorite thing about El- Ibaipan Elementary School is spelling tests.
I love all the teachers, but I really love Ms. Fairbys' class.
But my favorite teacher has been Ms. Peterson and Mrs. Gilmore.
My favorite teacher at Wendover High School is Mr. Grossman because he is a good teacher during class and he also cares about what, what's going on outside.
My favorite teacher at Grantsville Junior High is Mrs. Riding because she'll help you with anything you need, even if it's a personal problem.
My favorite thing about Grantsville Elementary is being a member of student council. My favorite teachers are Mrs. Arnold and Mrs. Barris.
My favorite teacher is Mr. Stewart because he has after school activities and it's really fun because some of, and for the after school activity is math and it's not just plus or minus, it's division and other stuff.
My favorite teacher is Ms. Peterson because she has a really fun environment in her classroom and it's, I learn a lot in her class.
My favorite teacher at Grantsville Junior High is Mrs. Powers because she's super kind to everyone and she's just like a mom and she'll just help you with anything.
My favorite thing about Wendover High School is that there's a variety of sports that you can play. My favorite teacher is Mr. Grossman is because he's a really nice teacher and he can help you with a variety of things.
My favorite teacher is Mrs. Morrison because he has the white crayon color so I would, we, we'd, uh, marker and we could actually see this stuff.
My favorite teacher is Ms. Akins because she made us work hard to learn.
Over five hundred and fifty miles in eight hours spent in the district car just to see the Grantsville area. I hope you enjoyed hearing from our students. Thank you for all you do so they can do what they do in the classroom. Um, as I said, watch out, I've seen that a lot of times and it, it struck, struck me that, uh, how cool of a job I have. When I was a, when I was a teacher in the classroom, I loved, loved, loved my kids. And I can remember the, the day I left, it was in the summertime, and I went back to that classroom and they weren't there. And I stood in front of my classroom and I cried. And I told my students goodbye because at the end of the school year, I was still going to be there. And it was like July twenty eighth and I, I took the, I was asked to take a job as a lead teacher at the old Twilla South High. And that started me on my administration career. And after being a lead teacher, that was a cool job because I was kind of administrator and I still taught, I had kind of the best of both worlds. And then I became an assistant principal and I can remember the last conversation I had with a student there. Her name was Starr. And we were standing outside the, the school and I said, Starr, I'm not going to be here next year. And she said, Mr. Ernst, what are we going to do without you? And I said, I don't know, but you'll be okay, Starr. And then I had the great opportunity to open, uh, Blue Peak High School in the Community Learning Center. And to be at that school with those kids was remarkable. To see kids who had either given up on themselves or some people have given up on them and to make a difference in the lives of children and the lives of young adults is amazing. And then Dr. Rogers asked me, the day before school started one year, to leave Blue Peak and go to Grantsville High. My first day at Grantsville High was the day before school started. And once again, I found the best job in the district at Grantsville High School. And I absolutely love Grantsville High and the students there and the teachers I work with. I had the privilege to shake a lot of hands at graduation, my last time as a principal, of each senior who I was there with for four years. And then somehow I stumbled into being an area director and I realized now I have the best job there is. Now I get to go into a kindergarten classroom one day and a biology lab the next day and then into a Utah Studies class the next day. And each time I do that, it gets better and better. And I get to work with principals. I have an amazing job. And I think sometimes in the, I've told my principals this many times and this will be my last thing because I'm way over my time. When I was principal of Grantsville High School, I remember one time I, I was working on a very important assignment. I was in my office and every once in a while I'd have to lock myself, myself in my office to get a trust lines report done or something done. And the bell rang, it was in between classes and I knew I, I needed to go speak with a teacher. So I left my office, walked across the commons, went down one hallway down to the new hall, if you're familiar with Grantsville High School. It's, it's a ways from the office. And I got to the teacher's room and I asked whatever question it was that I needed to have asked. And as I was walking back, it dawned on me that I had missed the most important thing about that walk and about my job. And that was the hundreds of kids that I passed from my office down to the teacher's classroom. I was so caught up in all the other stuff, the policies, the procedures, the COVID nineteen-esque things, that I forgot what was most important. And I made myself a promise that day, that every time I'm in a school and I'm walking down the hallway, I will have my ears and eyes open, open to what matters most. And like I said earlier, it's not the teachers, it's not the administrators, it's not the secretaries or the lunchroom workers. It's those kids from age five up to eighteen. That's the most important thing in our school district. And it is my honor and pleasure to be able to work each day with them one way or another. It wasn't just flattery, saying thank you for what you do so they can do what they do in the classroom. The classroom is what matters. I am so thankful for, uh, my opportunity to be here in Twilla County School District. And if you have any questions about my area, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? How come we have questions after that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point four is Board of Education reports. Um, anybody have a committee meeting that they'd like to report on? You reported last time. We had student advisory, anybody else?
Camille, do you want to talk about new board member?
New board member orientation and training?
Orientation?
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, la- on Saturday, USBA did their new board member training. Um, it was forty-five minutes over Zoom. Bob and Valerie both were there, me and the superintendent, it was really good. Um, they actually had all of the new board members introduce themselves and what district they were from. And then they talked about what they were most optimistic about happening for the next, um, school year, I guess. And so it was just interesting to kind of hear the different things that are happening and what people are looking forward to. And then my only other committee meeting that I had was, I actually participated with Twilla Tech, their Student of the Year Award. Huge shout out to Wendover High School on this. Their Student of the Year actually graduated from Wendover High School. In industrial maintenance, he continued on with his education at Twilla Tech and he ended up winning Student of the Year. So it was really exciting to be part of that and hear how great all of the kids are doing over there, so.
Thank you. We had student advisory committee last week, um, Julia, Melissa and myself were there. I just have to say, we had representatives from every school but Wendover and they had something else that day, so they just couldn't come. But I have to just say that our student body officers that come to that meeting are, show just a great level of maturity and vision. They are, they have great suggestions and they're free to, they share freely, um, no hold, no holding back. But we did discuss a little bit, uh, the dress code changes and how that was going and good was the overall answer. As well as school sa- some of the safety issues in their schools and virtual learning. Was this, was there one other thing? And they want more dances.
More dances and more assemblies. They like, they like being together.
Yes, so they did request for us to figure out how they could have some assemblies and activities and so hopefully we're going to work on that. But, um, I've just been very impressed with them and, and their input into the district. You want to add anything or? Okay. So moving on to action items, um, everything on the action item lists tonight are policies. I will remind everybody, the board has had time to look at these policies and look over them. The first group will do one by one, the second group I would entertain passing in a block. So starting with seven point one, new policy, alternative language services. Do you need to say anything, Jolene or? Stephanie, do you need to say anything about it?
If you have any questions, I can help answer them.
This is wanting a second read. Correct? Any questions?
Since it's following the USBA model policy and it's a requirement, is there, does it necessitate a second read?
No, it pretty much follows the policy that's, um, administrative code. There are just a couple additions for our district and within our English learner program and, and our department. And that would be under the purpose. And so some of that wording would be a declaration of, of what our belief is in supporting our students to have another language and, and what they bring to our district. And then there was a couple little words here and there that we added just to make more sense with the Twilla County School District processes. But other than that, it follows straight through what administrative code says.
Model policy?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, with that in mind, I would propose that we, that we adopt the alternative language service policy as presented.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Scott and seconded by Melissa to adopt alternative language services as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie. Um, new policy, early learning plan, also first read.
Yeah, this one is pretty much the same as Stephanie's. It follows the model policy, uh, really to the T. It is one that we could certainly adopt with, with no further, I don't anticipate any issues with this one if we went to a second reading.
Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll motion to approve the new policy, early learning plan for adoption.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Melissa, seconded by Camille to approve, um, new policy, early learning plan for adoption. Is there discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, new policy, immunizations. It's the model policy? It's state law. So any, yeah, all of the rest of, so the next one as well, educator induction. Is that the same?
That's the second read, but it was a new model policy as well from last month.
So maybe just.
Oh, yeah, I think so. I think I reversed.
Can't adopt them as a chunk.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I was just going to state, I just so that others understand, when we reference that it's a model policy, what we're referring to is it's a state Board of Education requirement that we have these in place. I, I personally always found it interesting that the State Board of Education has these policies that we have, or these policies we have to have. I always just think, why don't they just adopt it at a state level and then we can, they, they like us to have individual, uh, local control, but then they tell us you have to.
Help them.
Have these. So it's kind of, you know, it seems kind of odd to me. But with that in mind, um, that's why, I think, just kind of the, the speed of that, I think it just helps others understand. But with that in mind and recognizing that these items in section seven are all model policies that we, we need to have by USBA, USBE, yeah.
USBE?
Yeah. Requirement, I would propose that we, uh, adopt, uh, the policies presented in seven point three, seven point four, five and six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved that we adopt the policies as presented in seven point three, new policy on immunization, seven point four, new policy on educator induction, mentoring and professional learning, seven point five, revised policy four zero three zero, employee bullying, abusive conduct, hazing and cyberbullying, and seven point six, revised policy six zero three two, student prohibition of bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, hazing and retaliation for adoption.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I make a suggestion that, um, on seven point five, we actually add the word prohibition after employee? We have that on the student one, it's called employee pro- or student prohibition of bullying, da, 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 da.
Promoting bullying?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify that we're not about employee bullying and abusive conduct. We're talking about prohibition. I just think it's clearer.
Are you a minable motion maker to that change?
Sure.
So we'll change seven point five, revise policy four zero three C, three zero, employee prohibition of bullying, abusive conduct, hazing and cyberbullying. Yes, um, Julia, then Alan.
So I just had a question and maybe I fell asleep during this last meeting. But is there a specific reason why we need two of those in each section? I mean, they're pretty much exactly the same policy. I mean, they're pretty much exactly the same policy.
What we discussed before was that if we had them the same, it would just be the same policy in two different sections of the policy manual because we have a student section and an employee section. So they're afraid, so it's basically just they're different sections, right?
Yeah, and if you'll remember, when we get a policy that's long, because there are differences, when we get a policy that's long, you guys have tended to say, "Can we make that shorter?" And it's one way to make it shorter, but also when people are looking up student bullying or employee bullying, there are times when if they type that in, they wouldn't be routed to the proper policy. So we can do it either way, there's no-
Well, it does seem like in a lot of those, it had employee and student on both policies. I mean, it's not like just one was totally addressing employees, the other students. It just seemed like we were back and forth with them, but I'm fine doing it with both.
Ellen?
Yeah, I just was wondering about the immunization. It says required vaccine means a vaccine required by the Utah Department of Health is a condition of attending school. Do we know what the position is on the COVID vaccination? I just, I don't want it to seem like we're taking some kind of political stance or something by passing immunization policy right as the vaccine is about to come out.
Sure. This is a model policy and it is listing the immunizations that the state requires at this point. So we don't know anything about the COVID.
The legislature would actually have to-
Add it to the list.
Add it to the list in order for it to be state required. And they may face that at this next legislative session.
Thanks for clarifying. Sure. Camille? Okay, any other comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, eight point one revised policy five zero two nine CTE internship for implementation. Do you want to say anything, Kristy?
Sure. Give Steve something to do. This was a rather old policy and so it was to get it up to code and tighten it to focus it more on the CTE internships and not just all work-based learning activities that we do. The other thing that I revise this policy is to add the LinkedIn and to give our students, specifically our seniors that go on an internship COVID-willing, to link professionally with the mentors that they're linking with. So that's kind of, if you have any questions about that, I included the form. We will have a policy and a procedure for, or a procedure for anytime a student wants to opt out from the LinkedIn experience. We're already doing that right now in our classes, but we would like to add this to our CTE internships.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I motion that we approve the revised policy five zero two, five zero two nine CTE internship for implementation.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Camille, seconded by Melissa to approve policy five zero two nine CTE internship for implementation. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Revised policy seven zero zero three, parent and family engagement also for implementation. Stephanie's back.
I'm back. So this one is a, falls under the Title I. It's part of the regulation of revisiting this policy every single year and having a committee. So this time, because of not being able to do in person, we just tried to do that virtually through opinions and statements through phone and conversation. The only thing that we have to change is the Youth and Family Resource Center at this time. And hopefully next year, we'll be able to visit in person because I think we're gonna be able to have a lot lengthier conversations in areas that we could take more input, feedback from our community and other stakeholders, especially our volunteers and parents in our Title I schools and across the district as well. So just Youth and Family Resource Center on this policy as a change, just to update the name of that.
Perfect, thank you. Questions or a motion?
I'll motion to approve policy, revised policy seven zero zero three, parent and family engagement for implementation.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Melissa, seconded by Julia to approve policy seven zero zero three, parent and family engagement for implementation. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Revised policy five zero two four, eligibility for extracurricular participation also for implementation. Do I say anything? There wasn't really anything. You didn't want to talk about your one extended day versus recovery. Okay. Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll do this again. Revised, I motion to approve revised policy five zero two four, eligibility for extracurricular participation for implementation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Melissa, seconded by Camille to approve policy five zero two four, eligibility for extracurricular participation, it's almost a tongue twister, for implementation. Any discussion to that motion, Superintendent?
Just a clarifying question and maybe to Matt or any of you on the board. Would it be helpful, hopefully this is a one-time pandemic in our lifetime, but I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to, part of the requirements for participation in extracurricular activity is to follow UHSA guidelines, which includes the testing protocol. I don't, I didn't see it in there. I just wonder if, as we're revising that.
I don't want to be reminded of it again.
Do we just, and not put COVID in there, but that-
Follow you-
Follow any other UHSA guidelines and rules or regulations and that would cover it? I'm not sure. Matt? Just to clarify that, if we had a question about-
I don't think there's a question simply because if we don't follow UHSA guidelines, we can't participate in UHSA. So if you don't-
If it's a given, that's okay. I just-
Good point, but I think we have to follow their rules to play with them.
That's fair.
You know, they can change their guidelines.
Every day?
It doesn't necessarily mean that there's a pandemic, but to be completely honest, I hope that I'm not around for the next pandemic. Falls to a couple of generations past me.
I hope that I'm still around during this pandemic, so I get it. I just, I just-
I think it would be good to have that in there just because UHSA can change at any point in time and we have to abide by those rules when they make those changes if we want to participate.
I think-
I think we're dead the way we are.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Julia. Thanks, Matt.
Oh, we did.
Oh, yeah, we already moved. We already moved. We're just discussing. Like, I won't lose my mind. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of implementation? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for sticking it out the whole time. We have a fairly full room and that doesn't always happen. So I appreciate that and it has been a pleasure. You want to make- Okay, I motion that we adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.